I'm going to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Williamstown Elementary School Committee at 8:15. Welcome all, thank you for staying. Just to give you a sense of the agenda, we have some minutes to approve and then there's going to be public comment. Once we get to the public comment, I'll make a couple of comments about how it's going to run. But first, I'd like to just go ahead and get started with the minutes. Many members said we have a chance all to take a look at the minutes as presented.
Yes.
Thanks, as always, to Kathy for an excellent job. Any comments, revisions, suggestions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from February 10th, February 17th, and March 3rd as presented.
Mr. Chair?
We, I think you have to do them individually because there was a different level of attendance at each one.
Okay. I've had a request to have the approvals be done separately, so I would entertain a motion to approve for February 10th.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Moving on to February 17th, I would accept a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
I should abstain, I wasn't, I wasn't there, right?
Yeah. Okay. And then, so, one abstention. And then, March 3rd minutes, I entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Kathy?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Motion carries three zero with two abstentions. Thank you. All right. It is time for public comment. I have the list of public commenters. Our policy for public comment is that each commenter gets three minutes. Our standard amount of public comment time is 15 minutes. However, we have 10 people signed up on the list, so doing the math, I will use my discretion as chair to extend the public comment period to 30 minutes. That will give each of the 10 people their full three minutes, and I'm going to be fairly strict about that because after the public comment period, we all have our deliberations to make, and I expect that we will all have extensive questions as well. So, I appreciate, I respect the comments that you're going to make, and I hope that you will respect our need to take the time to deliberate as well. I will ask each public commenter to come to the mic so that the public at home can hear, state your name, and then begin your comment. I'll let you know when the three minutes is up. Fern.
I'm Fern Murtaugh, and I'm the teacher of the preschool program, the full day preschool program. First, I want to thank all of you who have volunteered your time to serve on the school committee. Volunteer service on our town boards is vital for our town, and I know that you've been very busy since the preliminary budget was presented last month. As you, I'm speaking to urge you to revise the proposed budget so that it maintains a full day side-by-side program and other parts of the program that, the school that people have talked about. As I suspect you've either realized because you have had children in side-by-side, or that you've heard from past and present parents, this program, along with the half-day side-by-side session, has been incredibly successful in providing an education to children with delays and disabilities alongside peers who do not have any. Every class that Sherry and I have taught has been different because of the children who are in the class. Something that is the same is how each child with significant needs has an education that is appropriate to what they need in order to make the greatest gains. Also, the children all learn the importance of accepting and respecting each other as individuals and look past disabilities. You have an incredibly difficult task of voting on a budget for the next year. It is a year of hard choices, and I don't envy you. Along with this responsibility is a possibility that your vote will set the future for how the children and families in Williamstown value inclusion. Your vote could also impact future years' budgets negatively if our youngest children with special needs do not get an education that is appropriate for their own unique needs. Before you accept this budget, I'd like to urge you to vote on a budget that supports quality-inclusive early childhood education. Let the Finance Committee of Williamstown, who has studied the town finances, decide if funding a budget that supports quality-inclusive early education along with maintaining quality education in the upper grades is important to this town. They could only do that if you present a final budget that does not include the current cuts. If you vote upon this present and final budget to the FinCom, this is what they have to accept, a budget that changes the fabric of our school. In my 30 years, just 30 years of involvement with this school, I have observed that once programs have been cut, they have not come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Fern. Excuse me, excuse me. I'd like not for there to be applause. I think that everyone needs to understand that as we consider this budget, there are trade-offs, and that we're all working to try to figure out ways to honor the needs and wishes of the community throughout. And so, comment, as much as I understand you're wanting to indicate support, I want to be sensitive to those who have other needs that might be in peril by positions that everyone takes. So, please be, please be considerate of that. Tara Olney.
I would just like to say I understand the very difficult position, and in my opinion, I would prefer to go to the town and ask for more money to support some of these important programs that I think would be devastating to lose, particularly side-by-side, but among others. And I would like to bring it to the Town Finance Committee and see if they can offer more support for our school rather than lose these things. And that's for her and for everyone else that is going to be attending the school in the future.
Thank you. Mark McDermond.
I have to follow the baby down. You're a pediatrician, isn't that part of your...
That's one thing they taught us, never follow the baby.
I didn't have a microphone either.
Superintendent, yes, members of the school, thank you guys.
Sorry, but I had to comment from the audience.
Absolutely. I misunderstood your comment. Thanks for caring so much and trying so hard. I just want to comment on, I had a brief casual conversation with somebody in the town about does class size matter all that much? And there's a lot of, there's studies on this, and I had read some of them when I was in education graduate school, back when I was a middle school teacher for quite a few years, but I'd forgotten all of them. So I didn't go back and read them. But I did read the chapter in Malcolm Gladwell's book that I think probably a lot of people have read that sort of suggests maybe it doesn't matter too much between, say, 17 and 26, roughly, maybe. And I think the data is what it is, but I think for this school, it would matter a lot because I think this school is excellent. I think if you take an excellent teacher, I think one way to interpret that data is if you take an excellent teacher, and I think ours mostly range from good to excellent, and an excellent principal, and I think ours is, that they will probably teach and act differently with a smaller class size. I know I did because I think I cared as much as you do, Doug, when I was in the classroom, and do things differently and then get different results. My kids, I have two children in fourth grade, so I'd be saying this anyway, but obviously I'm biased, they benefited greatly from small class sizes for five years. And if that's what I get, I'm satisfied, honestly. But I hope they can get two more years of that small class size where our excellent teachers can do things differently because they have 18 than they can with 24. I know the results will still be good, and you have a lot of difficult decisions to make. But I think that data is best interpreted as if you have good teachers and a good principal and a good structure, they will do better with fewer kids in a class.
Thank you. Maury Lawson.
Hi, I am Maury McCarthy Lawson, and I grew up here in town. Went away to college, came back, had my family. And my daughter was born only five days early, so she went to the Williamstown Community Preschool and did great. However, when I had my triplets, it's a high-risk pregnancy, they were born 11 weeks early. And we did everything we needed to, the one who has Mosaic Down Syndrome, we went to Boston Children's Down Syndrome Clinic, you know, to make sure he was meeting his milestones. And at the Williamstown Community Preschool, people here joked about the lamb room, but the bunny room was the youngest room where my kids started exactly at 15 months, the youngest they could. And when it was time to go to the panda room, which was upstairs, my boys couldn't go. And it turned out it's because they weren't speaking. And I had never had triplets, two of them are identical, the fraternal has the Mosaic Down Syndrome, and they had their own language, but they weren't speaking, and I figured, well, they'll speak, until the preschool teachers there said, no, milestones are critical. What kids learn at a young age impacts their future learning. So, it was after the March screening, it was in June, that my kids were screened. And when they were screened, the preschool here decided that, wow, I'm worried more about the identicals who don't talk at all than your one with Mosaic Down Syndrome. They needed, all three of them, a full day preschool, which they got in side-by-side. They have flourished. When they went to kindergarten, even the one with Mosaic Down Syndrome is further along than many kids are when they come to kindergarten, and it's thanks to the side-by-side being on the IEPs. I cannot say enough, I am so thankful for this program. And at three, they didn't turn three till August 26th, right before school started, two half-days wouldn't have done it. They really needed a nap, and it would have been too much repetition. On the outside, when they were leaving the program, my one with Mosaic Down Syndrome did need repetition. I was told that two half-days in Ms. Sherry's class, I was told by our principal, who's a great principal, Ms. Bruckner, that it's too much repetition for them. Where for Danny, that's what he needed was a repetition, and he's flourished with that. Did phenomenal with Sherry. So we went from the full day when they needed it to the half-day. Coming in, I was told, oh my gosh, they need the full day program, which is how they did so well. Leaving, I was told by this school, the two half-days services are good for some kids, but that is not okay for all, it's too much repetition for some. Knowing how well my kids did and how many people come to Williamstown for this program, I know that if, I just talked to somebody during this brief 10-minute break, they're already contingently looking at a different preschool because they're in Fern's full-day side-by-side, but they need to have something set up for next year. So if we pull out these full-paying people, you know, we've got eight people signed up for next year, my fear is they're already going to be set somewhere else.
Pardon?
Okay, and that's going to cost us money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Claffey.
Hi, I'm Sharon Claffey. I'm emotional. I'm Eve Claffey's mom, and side-by-side, the full-day program was incredible for her. And I just wanted to speak about the importance of it. We moved here in July of the year before she entered, so the school budget for that year would have had no idea that she was coming. And she needed the full-day program, and I think two half-day programs would not have worked for her. She was non-verbal but very smart, and I think she would have been bored to tears. And so, I just, one of the things that concerns me is that we may be a little bit too short-sighted about this, that we might be looking at how we can fix some budgetary problems right now and might not be considering the bigger picture. I know that you guys are in a really hard spot, and I appreciate everything that you're doing, but I just wanted to call attention to the fact that in a community like this where you've got both MCLA and Williams College, you're going to have people coming in over the summer, and so there is always going to be that we don't know who's coming. And if you have just the two-day side-by-side half-day programs, and you have somebody that comes and tips the balance, if this were six years ago and here comes Eve, it could be very, very difficult and could put us in a much worse position financially. But thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Susan Muller. Gone? Okay.
Can I have a question? I emailed in to be on the list, but someone said that didn't work, I don't know if I'm on the list or not.
What's your name?
Kevin Kedda.
No. Mashe.
Thanks for the time this evening, and Doug, thanks for the presentation, that was helpful. Just to put all my cards on the table, I'm slightly biased, I have a wife who's a teacher in the school, so just want to make people aware of that. But I also have two children who are going through the school, one of which who's a kindergartner. So thinking long-term, I just want to say to the school committee, I'd urge you not to approve anything tonight. I think that taking the time to heed Doug's words at the end of the presentation where he talked about thinking long-term, I don't think now's the time to sort of rip that Band-Aid off. I think we need more data. I think we need to look back at the past and see how we got where we got where we're at. I think we all thought the train was moving along just fine, and it's at the station now and it's stuck. And it came as a surprise. Typically, these things shouldn't come as a surprise, so I think looking back at the past, but also looking to the future, I think when you go in front of the Town Finance Committee or have a conversation with the town manager or talk to key stakeholders in town, to be able to explain what the plan is. And there's a number of things that were in conflict tonight as we discussed about things. We talked about risk, and, you know, what if people move in? Well, if we increase class sizes to a point, it becomes very hard to expand, I think those words were used. So I think rather than hoping that we will be more comfortable next year, I think taking our time to really plan out and look at those years that are coming, and what is a tenable increase to the budget. Unfortunately, these are numbers and words on a page. These impact people in our community. These are our neighbors, these are our friends, when we talk about cutting positions, these are good people. The school committee put a lot of work into transforming our faculty recently, and adding a number of new faculty to our school that are really, really good people. And this is a step backwards because as we all know, they're going to be the first ones that have to leave. And it just goes against what I think we were trying to do is build this momentum and what people appreciate as our, as our school. So I would just simply urge you that I think you need more data. There were a lot of hands raised tonight asking a number of different questions, asking about a number of different numbers. I don't know that we've engaged all the people in town that can assist with these types of issues, especially if we have a three- or five-year financial plan and figure out how to plug those gaps. We've been in these great positions, and somehow we've gotten ourselves here, and I think we need to learn from that, but also project how we can go forward. And I would just simply urge you guys to do that before making a decision that will have a huge rippling impact because of all the reasons that you explained about expanding and the risk and all of those kinds of things. I don't think it's one program. I echo to what some of the people said about the teachers in the classroom and the people that spend the most amount of time with the kids. That's the impact that we're having with these cuts, it's major. And I urge you to really think about that and think about the prudent path forward before making a decision that will, that will set us back.
Thank you. Nancy Garrity.
Hi, my name's Nancy Garrity. I just want to reiterate what I've already said to each of you in the letter that I sent you, that I really appreciate your, your time that you're spending on this. I know it's very difficult, and I want to apologize in advance for the change.org petition. Not apologize, but our intention was to show you how very important side-by-side is to this community. I didn't know that change.org would email you every time somebody signed the petition. So we're up to 247.
Wonderful wake-up call.
It's only every five or 10.
There you go. Apologize, I'm so sorry.
After the first hundred, it dropped off, didn't it?
Not my intention. But I think you've heard from the community how important that program is to us, and I just want to speak about that just for a minute. My understanding is that the program was started 27 years ago as the most cost-effective way to provide mandated services for preschoolers with IEPs in our community. And I think that that still holds true, as far as I can tell, because we intend to reinstate the full-day program should we need it. We still feel like that's the best way to provide these services, and I wholeheartedly agree. I think that the way that the program is structured, it's intended to naturally contract and expand, as we've said we need our programs to do when we don't know exactly how many students will be coming into them. And the way that side-by-side is structured, the students who come in with an IEP get priority, it is a program for them, it's an inclusive special education program that allows additional children to join the program under tuition, as you know. And I think that it's built that way so that it can weather the ups and downs of IEP enrollments. And I think, thirdly, that it has an enormous impact on our community. I think that the kids who form those relationships in preschool carry that all the way through the school, and I think it has an exponential effect on the rest of the school. I think that kids move forward with a posse, and they are seen as part of the school. And I think that the impact of getting rid of full-day side-by-side would be a significant impact to that part of our school community. So I would urge you to consider spending more time on it, looking more closely at our expected IEPs for next year, to make sure that we really maintain the capacity that we need, and as part of that, think about what the, what the program means to this community, it means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Hugh Daly.
Hugh Daly, thanks again for your service. I know how difficult it is to sit behind that table. I would like to advocate now for the return of the two teachers. Let's reduce the class sizes, fourth going up to fifth, and bring kindergarten back. I think that that, the other thing I'd really like to see you guys work on is the curriculum coordinator position. I'd really, as we move through these difficult times, one of the best things we can do is still try and make some process improvements along the way. I know this is a tough budget, I think that you can hopefully figure out a way to bring, bring those teachers back because they are, in my opinion, the more important portion of this. And I, to be, my son is a heavy consumer of sped services, so I want to point out to everybody that the, as Doug has said, when sped services are needed, they will be provided. And so what, when you're cutting things or looking at changes in services, the sped services can be altered in such a way due to the current volume, but they will be returned to whatever is needed for the individual student. The changes we're making outside of the sped programs are where I have concerns. And that's again, I'm a heavy consumer of sped products. So if we could look at those teachers and really, really, really try and get some coordination across grades, within a grade, across classrooms on the, on the curriculum stuff, that would be very helpful, and I think make the school better in the long term.
Thank you. David Irwin.
Hi, David Irwin. Yeah, I just wanted to echo some of the other people's comments about urging you not to approve the budget so that you can take something to the Finance Committee and kind of maybe work with them. One thing that makes me uncomfortable about it is all of these things seem to have come on fast, like Matt had mentioned. And, I mean, I would really like to see the strategic plan, you know, which I know is going to take time, and you can't do that before maybe even the end of this budget cycle. But, you know, some things you make choices now, it's very difficult to reverse them. And, you know, I can be convinced of, you know, that cuts have to be made, but I do like to see a lot of, you know, information that I can believe that's, that's public, that I can understand, which I think this process has been so fast, it's been very difficult to understand it. So I'm, you know, hopeful to look at the strategic planning process and kind of get all the information from that. So, yeah, that's all I'd say.
Thank you. And Kevin, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name.
Kevin. Thank you, I'll be brief. You know, I'm very aware that I stand here at a mic to give my opinions at the luxury of all the work in front of me. And I've never been on a town committee, I've gone to them, and I know that this town's filled with a lot of caring, very intelligent people. So I just want to thank you on that. With that, I would ask you to not pass this budget, and for the reasons that even from Thursday tonight, what I've seen is like different numbers, and you guys, there's a lot, it's super dynamic. So, in a way, it sounds like you should push back on the Finance Committee, maybe on the town, I don't know how these things work, but I would also suggest pushing back on the public. What can I do? I own a business in town, I'll do something. Do we need to come up with strategies where like, okay, you guys all have these opinions, but what are you going to do? Because we have a reality here. So, I don't know how those things happen, you know? I don't know legally if there's ways, you know, I don't know. But I want to thank you. I would suggest that you just put it on hold for a second, which I know you don't want to continue these conversations. But maybe we should push back on the town and myself, or other people who have opinions about what should be saved, and like, well, how are you going to save it? And I'd be open to that discussion, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Thank you all for your comments, thank you all for your participation in the Q and A session during the public hearing. Moving on, on the agenda, to financial reports, the fiscal year '17 budget. Doug, do you have an opening presentation or comments you'd like to make?
Well, in your packets, you've got the spreadsheets that are there, and as indicated, it's difficult to represent the numbers in a presentation, hence the spreadsheet itself in the, with both the FY '16 and FY '17 appropriated and non-appropriated numbers. As you know, we have been working on this for a while and have gone to the town multiple times. The town, I think, has consistently, as you know, received from the school a 2.5% increase for the last three years. And in this particular case, I did, I paid no heed to that. I actually looked at what it is that we thought was going to be in the best interest of kids, and then I looked at what the history has been, and found it to be somewhere around 6% or so. So, so I went to the town and found out about the 2.5%, and then we, we had to go back and readjust. I went back, as you know, and asked about Medicaid and asked them for more support, and they agreed. So we are coming in, and I'm, what I'm proposing, as you saw today, is a 3.79% budget increase in the appropriated budget. So, you know, the, these cuts are hard, and, you know, but as, as in my conversations with members at Town Hall, they have obligations to the schools and police and municipal and, not the fire, I'm learning, but they have obligations to, about Greylock and to McCann, and, you know, for them to come in and expect for us to come with them a 2.5% budget. And as you know, and as you've seen, you know, the 2.5% budget has been supported and, bolstered by the choice funds that are now since depleted. So, I mean, I heard what people were saying, and, you know, the challenges that are there. If the town is capable of giving us more money, you know, I will absolutely explore that, and would support that. Where that money goes, though, is, I tried to explain, I'm concerned about kindergarten in fifth grade and straight forward, I'm concerned about, you know, unanticipated expenses. There is that risk question that is asked, and that is a valid one. And I never like to risk anything with children. So, you know, if we were to go and ask the town for more money and push us up over, you know, 4%, 5% know, 4%, 5%, what impact is that going to have on the rest of those aspects of the town where they have their obligations? So I tried to be reasonable. I thought that they were... I found them to be very professional and very supportive of the schools. And Lancey, in my last meeting, when we went to meet with them, I showed them the cut list, and I said, "This is where we're going to go if, for some reason, they're not able to support our final request." And they said, "No, you've done your due diligence, and I appreciate that." And so that's how we ended up with a 3.79 versus a 2.5, which has been the history. So anyways, I mean, at this point, this is what it is, where I'm at. If there is a mechanism for us to lobby the town for additional funds that would then allow us to offset some of these costs, or save for those unanticipated move-ins over the summer, I would support that. But I don't feel comfortable at this point offering a specific amount, because other than it would be a fixed amount that we can then decide how to reallocate in light of those needs that I shared in the presentation. So...
I guess I need to clarify what you've said, because are you asking the committee to decide if we want to lobby the town and... Or, you know...
I'm coming with...
Before considering the budget, or...
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm confused about.
No, thank you. Because I, to be honest with you, I listen to people, and I hear what people are saying, and I see the need. Who doesn't want more money? But for me, 3.79% is a responsible amount based upon what our needs are going to be and what I think that the town is comfortable with. So, I mean, what you have before you is what it is that I'm presenting to you. I didn't come to you and say, "I want an extra $100,000." I'm coming to you with what I think is a difficult decision and a difficult budget. So... But you heard people saying, mentioning that they would like us to lobby more, like you to lobby more. And I don't... That's not my role at this point. This is what I'm presenting.
But you're open... It sounds like you're... What you've said is you're open to that discussion if that turns out to be, you know, what the committee decides?
I would support that. I know that there'll be disagreements, but as you know, how that money is spent is a very different conversation than asking for more money.
That's all. I'm just trying to figure out. I just wanted to clarify what you meant by, you know, in your comments.
Mr. ...
Committee members, what I had envisioned is a little bit different from how we have usually done things, because in the past, we've usually had relatively small number of questions on things, and so it's made saying, you know, it hasn't been... It hasn't been a disorganized matter for one of us to ask questions, somebody else to ask a question immediately thereafter. I know I have a big, long list. And so what I would suggest, what I'm going to suggest doing is taking the floor as chair to open, and then passing the baton on to individuals to ask what questions they have, and we'll take turns with questioning the administration in that way. Any objections to that or comments?
I just had a question.
Sure.
So I have a list of things, and I imagine some of our things are going to be the same, and some might overlap. Do you... If I have something that's related, and while it's up, do you want me to, you know, raise my hand and see if we can get the clarification on that point? Or would you prefer you went through your list, and then I can refer back to that?
I think that, you know, not knowing... I'm going to advocate for the uninterrupted flow, because I think that each of us, you know, the tenor of the questioning allows an understanding of the position. I think it makes the back and forth easier than having it taken in a different direction.
Absolutely. Okay. I just want to get clarification. Thank you.
All right. I will open. Doug, I want to take a step way back, because I want to put this budget in a context. And you are new, and this is your opportunity to establish a long-term vision for the school. And in a challenging budget sequence, I think that it's a difficult thing for you to show that. The numbers don't speak to the vision. So what I'd like is for you to describe your vision briefly, and how the budget reflects that vision.
My vision for education is simple. It really is to make sure that we celebrate both the individual differences and both the successes and failures, to learn from them. We're a learning institution. One of the things that attracted me to Williamstown was the fact that there was learning taking place both inside and outside of the classroom. And I've seen schools where, you know, as soon as school is over, it is a ghost town. And I've always said that the school should be the heart of the community, and this is the heart of the community. And I want to make sure that it maintains being that as much as possible. I mean, this place is always full of people. And so for me, to bring in that expectation and that hope and that belief, it was an easy match, because those are the things I think the community values as well. My... As you well know, and as the committee knows, you know, for me to enter the district, it is not just me just landing and then pointing a direction. It is a collaborative effort, and it takes time to enter. And this, as I said in my presentation, was an unanticipated problem that was thrust upon me, one that, you know, I am not happy to be making. However, as you saw before on the slides from the staff and the community about what they saw as strengths in the community, as needs of the community, and things of that they liked about both their children and the school, I've been advocating for things that will help satisfy that. And my concern is to make sure that our most... Those children that have the most burden are supported. And for those, the most kids that are... That have learning disability or have other needs, that, you know, we have kids that deal with difficult home lives or poverty, or, I mean, we are no different than any other schools. So for me, I try to look at them both through that lens and pragmatically. And in this case, the, you know, through preparations and conversations with people about alternate funding sources for some of these extracurricular activities, I'm very optimistic that we can continue to support them through that way, which I, again, because it's extracurricular or in some cases embedded in the school, are important. They help make it special. Kids may not remember this particular experience in their classroom, or a particular lesson that took place in an English class or a book that they read, but they may well remember for the rest of their lives, being involved in Shakespeare, or, you know, the excitement of seeing things grow in the garden. So... But then there are other kids that couldn't care less about that. So you want to have it, like, when you're feeding your child, you want to have a rich enough assortment for them to choose from. And my hope is that we would create a vision together, that would merge mine, that would merge, you know, the principals, the communities, and the staffs. And so in this case, the vision that I've embedded and I'm using is, you know, based upon a balance in trying to recognize that we need and should protect and serve our students that have needs, and where we can implement some cuts that are going to be able to be weathered. You know, 24 is large for a class of fifth grade, for example, and that was... That and kindergarten with two, along with the side-by-side, were the three that actually, for me, were the most challenging, because it is a need that we have. The school psychologists and the speech assistant, those two are reductions that may force us to do some things slightly different to be able to fulfill those services, but I'm confident that we can fulfill those services. So...
I know that you had a slide in tonight's presentation talking about the school choice balance declining. I'm not sure all the members of public remember, but were able to attend the PTO meeting, but at that meeting, you presented a different... A slide that had a different perspective on it, where it included not just the balances, but also sort of the committee's perception of the balances as time went on in terms of, you know...
Oh, yeah.
What the number was on a specific report with respect to a specific fiscal year on a certain date.
Yep.
And how that changed throughout the budget process and after the budget process in reality. And that's something I think that has concerned me. It is... I've heard concerns about it tonight. I guess my question is, how can we make sure that doesn't happen again? And what resources do you need from us to make sure it doesn't happen again? Whether it's coming from us, whether it's coming from the school community, whether it's something that we need to reach out and get people who are interested in helping to kind of figure out if there's something structural that we need to address, so that we can have more confidence going forward?
Well, I mean, that's a good point. When I discovered the various numbers that were presented in various reports for the choice funds, and how they differed so significantly from the actual number when the budget year had ended and was rolled over to the subsequent year, and you saw those numbers decline, I was concerned as well, because I looked at them, you know, I found a number, it was in a presentation, it made perfect sense. And then I looked at the presentation three months later last year, and it was completely different, and it also made perfect sense. So for me, it's two pieces. One is procedural. We collaborate with the town in how we manage our budget, and so one of the things that I've had conversations with my staff about is developing procedures that give us a more accurate picture of what the budget is at any given point in time. And I've had conversations with the town manager about this, and he's been very receptive to exploring this. So that's something that is on our to-do list. I think it's a critical piece. The other piece is simply being more transparent. I mean, the numbers that you have here in your spreadsheet, and, you know, and the grants and the things of that, for me, is to let people know what those actual numbers are. And I set a mandate when I came on board in the summer, that when we get grants, they'll be used for the purpose for which they were intended. And that's an important thing for me, because it demonstrates responsibility for requesting them. I know I've seen some other school systems, unfortunately I haven't worked in one, where they ask for grants, and then they use it for whatever purposes that they want, and they kind of backfill at the end what that was intended for. And so... And we'll be continuing to look at that. So, you know, I'm always going to... Just to be honest with you, I am concerned to have a single business manager and have three school systems with three different budgetary softwares and, you know, Graylock, even though it's in Williamstown, is its own entity. It has its own budgetary processes. It's like its own town. It prints its own checks. So...
It has its own finance committee.
It has its own finance committee, yes. And... Okay. So, you know, another potential is to try and identify how we can tap into people. There's a lot of people, as I've heard today, that might have resources. Masbo, the Mass Association of School Business Officials, did an audit, and they recommended that we hire an assistant business manager. As you know, again, based upon what you've heard this evening, I have not proposed that, but I did... I do think that that is a need, because it is... Given the complexity of this budget, times three is untenable. We have an extremely competent business manager, as we have an extremely competent PPS director, and so for me, to try and make sure that they get support, to me, is critical. There's been multiple business managers in multiple years, and that turnover, I think, is contributing to it, because Nancy, you spend a lot of the year re-establishing...
Yep.
Learning and getting things right.
Understood. And, you know, I think that, you know, my hope would be that the business manager gets support, you know, at Graylock, that the business manager gets substantial support from the all-volunteer finance committee up there. So that's a model that I find somewhat compelling. In public, in the Q and A, there's a question... I'm turning now more towards hard numbers in the budget and in the supporting materials that we received. And I'd like to push a little bit on the projection for zero-circuit breaker funds, because I've not seen a zero-circuit breaker year before. And I understand that the Baker administration is not necessarily as friendly to educational funding as past administrations have been. But, you know, during comment, there was a suggestion that it might not be zero, but it's probably not the 60 to 70 that it has, that it's run in the past. I know it's throwing numbers. I know it's a necessary guess, but there are a lot of necessary guesses in the budget. And so I'm... I'd like kind of a projection of, do you really think that number's zero? Or, you know, can you give a likely range that that will fall in?
I can't...
Kim?
So we have two, three students that will qualify for circuit breaker relief, and it's a formula. And so there's a threshold. I do not have the number threshold. The workbooks were just released early today. And so I can... If you want a guesstimate from me, based on just the services that the children receive and what we've had in the past, and a reduction of students receiving it, I would err on the side of caution and go 20 to 25 at the most.
Okay.
Just because the threshold amount in the six years that I've been here keeps going up and going up, and less kids qualify. And so we're down to only having three students here in this school that qualify. So our numbers, although the last three years were as great as they were, you have to take into consideration that one of those numbers was an out-of-district placement. And so there was that...
That's a higher circuit breaker need?
Correct.
And we're anticipating one out-of-district placement?
We have no out-of-district placements in Williamstown, which is cool.
Placement here. Out-of-district to here, or...
We have no out-of-district placement here.
Currently. That's what she means. We've placed no one out. Not that no one's not placed.
Right. But there's an anticipated need in the budget for '17.
For next year.
Okay. And so...
The money...
But the money we get for circuit breaker for that would not come until fiscal '18. It's a year's lag.
Correct.
Okay. So how many kids... You say we have three kids now. How many kids have we had when we were at the 60-ish to 70-ish level?
Somewhere between five and seven.
Okay.
Including an out-of-district placement.
Okay. Next question again, same general area. Other special revenue funds? I know that there's ongoing research on those. I'm curious. I'd like to get a status update on those numbers, because at the moment, they're reflected as zeros in our resources.
Yes, these funds are... Actually, it's on the second page there at the bottom, as you can see. These are small funds that the school has that I'm still exploring. And so rather than being presumptuous, because some of them, I suspect, are actually been used over the years, like field trips, and it is...
The library has a special revenue account that in the past, the budget actually was budgeting books and supplies against the library rent.
Right.
And so that's an example of a special revenue account that's been drawn down. And at this point, that's an example of something that was put back into the operating budget, because there wasn't been resource available anymore for the special revenue account.
Okay.
So when we first tried to develop the budget a few months ago, the spec... So when we first tried to develop the budget a few months ago, the special revenue accounts had been drawn down to the point where we tried, similar to what we did with school choice, anything that seemed like it actually should be in the operating budget, we moved that to the operating budget. And that's something that Joel and I are looking at. What do these accounts actually look like? What is their intent? And where can we go for some funding for some of the initiatives that we talked about tonight, like Shakespeare and the Guardian Club and that kind of thing, being covered by W C. W C is an example of the special revenue account.
Okay.
That is more of a, tends to be fairly substantial year over year. It was a resource that we could, I think, among the others, we could work with W C to talk, to have a follow-up on what are any things out of this year. Some of the other accounts are very, very small and not reliable in terms of the revenue that's potentially drawn to that.
If, yeah.
And it's, so it's something that we kind of tried to step away from as money that we're using to fund school initiatives that should be in the operating budget.
Okay. And so I guess, you know, I know that you've done a good job in the budget of starting to identify where we, where things move into the operating budget.
Right.
But they come from sources that aren't the typical sources, that you're kind of footnoting that to keep us informed.
Right.
And I'd recommend, I guess I'd recommend that you continue to do that-
Okay.
...in these cases so that we can follow it and track it and understand that if, if the number leaves the page that we're used to seeing it on-
Right.
...then it went to this page that we haven't seen it on before-
Right.
...but that we would all agree is probably where it belongs.
Right. And since you brought up the one that jumps out at the end is the library and moving money initiatives or items that had previously been located outside, that were charged against that special revenue account, it just made sense to move that into the operating budget. The three accounts that we left being charged against special accounts were ones that we actually had more control over.
Yep.
And those were the rental fee account where we actually bring in revenue, for instance, with Williamstown Theater Festivals here in the summer. So we know what the revenue projection is there. And so in that case, we budgeted something like custodial overtime against the rental fee. And then another example is we have a van that Longcrereau pays us for their use of the van.
Yep.
So that's a revenue source and we use that to offset the expense of the van.
Sure.
Yes.
I wonder if we should move one of the microphones over in front of the administrative staff? I can do that.
That's not a bad idea, yeah. I think that was probably the intent of that chair, now that I think about it. In the interest of time, I'm just going to make some comments. And you can choose to respond to them if you'd like, just let me know.
Okay.
I've heard a lot of things today, you know, I'm happy that you're looking for other sources of funding to replace areas where the appropriated budget will, you know, where we're trying to find new ways to keep programs that we would otherwise potentially need to lose. So I'll be interested in hearing those efforts and where, where those monies are coming from. The comment that you made about having contacted the state to get a sense of, you know, what a permissible split in, in the side-by-side program, whether you're talking about the half-day programs or the full-day programs, as far as the number of special ed kids, special ed kids to regular ed kids was helpful. It's, you know, I would have preferred to have them say-
A formula.
14-1 is no, but 13-2 is yes. But being a lawyer, I know that there are often tests that don't have bright lines. Nevertheless, you know, I want to be comfortable with a sense of, you know, where we would draw that line. If, if there's not a bright line with the state, then I'd kind of like to know where we would draw that line. Is it at 8-7 where we've tended to draw it? Is it at 10-5? Is it at 11-4? And I think that we're all cognizant of the risk factors involved in oversubscribing the program and not leaving open slots for potential special needs students who need those services. But it's still a data point that I know a lot of people are interested in because there's some confusion about, you know, how many tuition-paying kids can you actually have in the program? And therefore, how much revenue can it generate against the expenses that get charged to A question about the budget. The column on the far left, FY15 revised budget expended, is that functionally equivalent to an actual spending number?
Yes, that's the term that the, that's on the Munis report.
Okay. So if anybody's looking at this and they see that word-
That's, right.
-that is actual spending from FY15?
Exactly.
Can you explain for me the column's appropriated original budget with total adjusted budget?
So, so Wes has traditionally used the, for purposes of the appropriated budget. So the way to think of the budget is there are two components. The appropriated, which is the amount of money that the town gives us towards our school. And then the other piece is non-appropriated, which as Doug has talked about tonight, would be the grants and other sources of revenue. So the benchmark for the appropriated is the original budget from the prior year. So last year, the town, the school approved an appropriated budget. So that's what's listed here is the FY16 appropriated original budget. That's, that's the benchmark that we're comparing the FY17 appropriated to. Next to that is a column that's FY16 non-appropriated adjusted budget. The reason that's called adjusted is it's for all intents and purposes, it is the original, but it's not exactly the original. And I didn't want to call it the original because it is slightly different because it reflects any slight changes to grants and the other sources of revenue that may be different from what was originally budgeted.
So, so we make estimates early on about grant and other relatively minor revenue sources and changes are made to that column to reflect actual receipts compared to-
Exactly. Once, once the grants are awarded.
Okay.
So it reflects the actual award. And so then the total is, it's total adjusted, it's the total of those two columns.
Okay. A question. What allowances does this budget make for potential staff retirements? Do we know about staff retirements at this point? Is it something that's, that's in the budget? Is it something that we'll need to allow for later on?
I think we plan for one retirement and that's it at the moment. You know, if somebody else does retire, then we could recoup a potential difference. Remember, with a retirement, the savings isn't frequently not as significant as some people might think it is in straight salary is also, the retiree gets, you know, gets to continue with insurance up until a certain age. And then if we hire somebody, there's the potential for them taking on insurance. So there is not always a massive savings, but there is if you hire somebody with less experience.
And the offset of a retiring person who, in a, in a position that basically preserves a position versus a reduction in force is that unemployment will offset, or, you know, to some extent, the, what you're, the additional costs that you're talking about-
Yes.
...which, you know, frankly are costs that we have already, that we're contractually obligated to provide in any way.
And that is factored in, into this, so-
For one retirement.
Exact, can I?
Yes, for the person, well, we haven't announced who it is yet, but for the person-
Yep.
...who has.
Understood.
Can I announce the position?
All right. So whether or not it's a retirement or a RIF, it is factored differently and we are conscious of that. So if it's a RIF, then obviously we would include unemployment, a cost associated with that.
I just wanted to know where the assumption was at this point, so that-
Right. It would be in the line item of the wage. So if it were a para, then that para, the para wage would be reduced by that amount. And if it was a RIF for a para, you would see an increase in the unemployment line.
Right.
And if it was retirement, you wouldn't see an increase in the unemployment line.
Okay. Turning to the IT service line. I am one, two, three, four, five, six, seven pages in. Maintenance section 52 to 49.
Right. It's page seven and it's under maintenance and it's four lines down.
Let me see that.
And the page numbers are at the bottom and they're really faint for some reason, but it's, so it is technically page seven.
I see it, yep.
So that is showing-
Let me ask my question.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
I know that there's an increase. I recall from the preliminary budget discussion in February that there are corresponding decreases in other line items.
Right.
Just need you to remind me where the other line items, where those decreases are.
Right. And of course, I had that sheet that summarized all those changes and Doug asked me about it on our way out and then I didn't physically bring it with me. But there were multiple codes under maintenance and also, and more so, under instruction. And it was, they were basically various technology expenses, but there was really no rhyme or reason as to how those codes were used. And it was very difficult for anyone who came in contact with those codes to manage them. So what we did is we just came up with a very simple accounting where basically we created a matrix with four codes and we decided that the technology is either student oriented or it's operational. And it's either software or it's hardware. And just let's have those be the four codes. And so as a result, we did a lot of reshuffling.
Yeah.
And we're still working on the cleanup of that for FY16. So right now, there's not a really good year-over-year comparison.
Remind me, is the sheet that you're talking, did we get that in February?
We did.
Then it's in my packet.
Yeah. So it basically explained the recoding-
Okay.
...of those accounts. And it showed whatever the difference was FY16 to FY17 was, was minor.
Okay.
But it was more just the reallocating.
Okay. We replaced our boilers.
Yep.
Do you have any expectation of utility savings from that? Because I know that we restored natural gas costs back up towards FY15 levels. But I don't know if there's an operational expectation that with new, new and more efficient equipment, that there will be savings there.
One would hope. And so, but the, the idea is, it's very difficult because right now we only have two boilers in-
Yep.
...and the third is not there. This has been an unusually warm winter. So last year was unusually cold, but it was that bad weather. So I do anticipate some savings, but again, to go and be, to go forward and make some cuts would be presumptuous.
The thing that was a little disconcerting on that particular line item was the last few years, the school spent $38,000 or $39,000 a year on natural gas for heat.
Yep.
And then for FY16, the budget was, it was budgeted at $20,000. And so that's a substantial drop. And the drop in propane was only, it dropped 12%. It was nothing like oil. So luckily for us, it's been a warm winter. But if this had been a really cold winter, I, we probably would be seriously over the $20,000. So that's why I wanted to bump it back up for next year, not to 38,000 or 39,000, but get it up over 30,000 and, and, you know, see what the benefit of the new boilers are.
My hope would be the boiler salespeople would be able to tell us what their anticipated savings would be so that we can-
Yeah. Or what the usage would be.
So that we can plug a number in and then, then we can use, then we can apply-
And I did, I did speak with them, sorry.
Then we can apply our own risk factors to, you know, account for weather as we see fit.
Yep.
You know, but, but the, the energy efficiency aspect should be known-
Right.
...because it's in the equipment.
Right. I actually worked with Jesse on doing the analysis for this.
Okay.
And so we assumed efficiencies based on the new boiler.
Okay.
But we also assumed a colder winter than this year.
Great. Okay. That's fine. Last question. I know transportation is always a major cost. I was intrigued by the slide about consolidating bus services because, you know, I don't, my child rides the bus every day. I'm not sure, you know, consolidating a bus route, I guess would presume, you know, could add a couple of minutes to people's rides, but it seems like a relatively, like a relatively painless cut compared to some of the things that we're talking about. And I'm just curious, like, what, what detail can you tell us about how those discussions have gone?
Well, actually, Ellie Katz has been working on this particular project for the last several weeks and actually just sent the raw data to us yesterday. And it looks like we might be in a position where we could reduce the bus. And if we do, we have to take into account, obviously, our bus contract, the distance, and, and then understand how some of those routes should be changed and we'll continue to pursue that. So the savings of that could be between $20,000 and $30,000.
Okay. I yield the floor. John?
Thanks, Dan. Last time I was in here, I was watching my son and his classmates in Peter Pan. That was a lot more fun. Just saying. I, I had a couple of questions too. I mean, Dan and I and the rest of us have all worked pretty hard on this for a long time, so many of our questions have been answered through the process, but I'd like to ask him questions that have been stimulated by much of the input we've received this evening. On the matter of class size, and maybe this was said and I didn't hear it, but, I mean, what is considered, what do we consider an ideal class size? I mean, is there such as far as, and I know this is a great debate and people argue, but is, I mean, is there?
As, as was said before, the quality of teacher trumps the class size. And so since we have good, we have quality teachers here, then my understanding is you want to keep it, the younger grades smaller, the older grades can go larger because they're more mature. The contract states, I believe, a maximum of 25 per classroom. So that's a, that's a ceiling right there. So less than that. So, but, I mean, Joel, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I will. You know, in your experience as, as an elementary educator, what would you say would be ideal class sizes for, you know, early grades versus later grades?
Well, two things. I think that in the teacher's contract, there is a vision kind of outlined about this, aiming for class sizes in the 20 to 21 range. And with 25 being not a steadfast ceiling, but a ceiling where when it gets to that point, we stop and say, let's talk about this. I think the general value of our school and pretty much research and education in general supports smaller class sizes in the lower grades. And I think Mark McDermott talked about, there's a, there's a great deal of research that shows that a couple of students here or there, once you're over 18, in a research standpoint, doesn't really make a big difference. But our school is always valued and our school has always been able to support class sizes in the realm of 20 in the upper grades, 21. We've had 22 recently. This current seventh grade, we had a class of 23. And personally, I've taught a class of 24 three times. So it's not like it's a, it's, it's not an impossibility, but it doesn't happen very often. And in, you know, and looking at those decisions and making those decisions about condensing sections, the school committee knows every year we have that discussion when we have a, we have the discussion if I advocate to increase to four sections and then the next year we say, okay, do we need four sections still? And the I has always been, at some point, we hope that we're able to reduce to three as children mature and become more independent. We have one class section proposed for next year that's still four sections in first grade. But looking at that compared to, that would, if we reduce those four sections to three, that'd be 21 children in first grade, which felt too big, which is why we looked in the fourth to fifth.
Okay. So, I mean, that correlates to the other question and we heard talking about the teachers' positions and the opportunity to either retain those or reestablish them. And then relative to the timeline, what, the timeline for the budget process, I mean, I've been through this a number of years now, but if you can remind everyone and- but if you can remind everyone and what that opportunity, what the opportunity is for better data before we would have to take a vote.
Well, the next step after school committee approvals, it goes to FinCom, as you know, which has been scheduled tentatively, I think, for week after next.
The finance committee?
Yeah.
I think it's March twenty-third.
Yep, next week. So, and then after that, it goes before the town.
Well, the town, I mean, town meeting is the hard stop, right?
Yes, that is when the town votes.
But I'm just looking for what amount of time we have if we were not to take a vote tonight. I'm trying to get a sense of that, that would be in our comfort zone still of.
Nancy, do you have the budget timeline handy?
You know what, I'm trying to, it might actually be, is Susan Clark here?
My recollection is that the hard date is March twenty-eighth.
It's the week before the twenty-third.
Yeah, eighteen, I think it is. I think it's eighteen.
I think that the hard stop is March twenty-eighth because that's the date on which the number needs to go on the warrant.
On the warrant.
That goes to town meeting. And so we would have to have a number.
Right, that approved.
For town meeting.
By that date. Nancy, do we think we'd get, I mean, Doug, much more data by that? We'd have to meet long, before that, of course. That's only a couple of weeks away, I don't know.
Sixteen, it's the sixteen.
On the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, the high school, I think it's the twenty-third.
What is?
Yeah.
The finance committee.
Hours is?
Okay.
So March sixteenth is the Williamstown Elementary FinCom meeting with Williamstown Finance Committee.
So the Finance Committee, we need to back that out before the twenty-eighth, obviously. Twenty-eighth's a Monday.
Right, the twenty-eighth is when we submit the document, the warrant.
So best case is we have two weeks to work with depending on how FinCom responsive they are. Yes?
Yes.
Right, and actually, the sixteenth is next Wednesday, right? And they meet on Wednesday, so.
Any big bills or anything come in in those next two weeks that we think will help us better, get a better handle on things? Since the budget is always, you know, a work in progress, it's.
You know, I don't, I can't imagine we're going to have any.
I don't know, just historically, anything at this time of year.
No.
And then the other thing, I mean, just always thinking to you is, I'm a fundraiser suppress. Revenue generating opportunities. And one thing that I hadn't thought of, just in the littlest there, you know, what those might be and other, was rentals, things like that. I mean, this isn't going to be a quick bit, but there are things that we could do there to help fund some of the, what those opportunities might be for what the programs such as Shakespeare and other things that have been cut. I know you've been already thinking about this. And to be clear, for everyone's benefit, the programs that are being, at least taken out of the appropriate, are Shakespeare.
Yep, Garden Club.
Garden Club.
Math Club.
Math Club.
And Lego Robots.
And Lego Robots, because that was calling to.
So, I mean, the choice of rent is a difficult one.
I don't know.
I mean, this is a community building, as you know. Ninety percent of the people that use a building are community members and you want to be a good neighbor. So in my experience, that is a, and to be, that would be part of the strategic vision in some ways as to what is a policy procedure and amount to properly cover whatever costs are. And it's a difficult conversation as much as, as simple as it can be mathematically. In my experience, it is not a enormous revenue generator.
No, well, then you have to factor in the tear on, wear and tear on the building.
Correct.
But to that point, something, looking at my landscape colleague across the way. You know, I think about as a co-coordinator of youth soccer in town and things like that, I admit, we do not pay a fee. To your point there, I mean, there's, I'm just, it's prompted me to think of other opportunities. And I just share that broadly here because a lot of you are involved in other things in the community too that take place here and it's a whole opportunity to think creatively that might help subsidize even any, even if it's small amounts. Okay, those were some of the questions I had there. I do have something that I just was gonna, I thought a lot about this, so I prepared my own comments here. And just because I've been on this committee now for five years and over those years, I, many of you have heard me remark how fortunate we've been as a school not to be among the sad headlines that appear daily, it seems, this time of year concerning school budgets in our region, take this morning's paper, for example. Our high school has been among them in the past. Wes has been very fortunate and we've avoided this until now, so this is a wake-up call. It's unfortunate and much to superintendent's chagrin that the financial realities of the world we all live in has finally caught up with us now. But it is fortunate that we have the superintendent leading us at this time with the staff he has assembled since he is tackling what are very challenging issues head-on. You may say he has no choice and I would tell him he doesn't either. But he has not needed this and is committing himself to put the school on the right path now and for the future. It is a difficult process for all of us. But I'd like to look at this process and the fact that so many members of our community have provided their input that this is a real opportunity to make the school stronger. We value everyone's input and engagement and it's what helps define our community. There has never been such a thorough review, believe me, an outlining of the school budget as there is taking place right now, and that's tremendous. Believe me, most school committee meetings are very lonely. We look out, there's no one here, we're usually in the library and I think of what books my children haven't read that are in the library. The review process this year has, given the budget challenges, has necessitated an evaluation of the school spending from all angles and all line items. And there are a lot of line items, as you now all see, and that's healthy for the school going forward. It's forcing us though to make difficult decisions, but we are doing so with the best interest of all four hundred and fifty-three children in mind. It is our role as school committee members to ensure the financial integrity of our school, which at all times, at times like this, requires supporting reductions in services and programs that we hope never to have to do. I am confident, as the natural and professional optimist that I am, that we will ultimately come out on the other side of this in a better place financially that will sooner than later, and sooner than later because of the passion and support of all of you and everyone in this community, enable us to pursue the school's priorities with renewed vigor and even stronger commitment to our children. My comments, I'm done.
Thanks, John. Richard?
This is my third time through this policy, through this process. And it seems that we're stuck in a bit of a perfect storm here. We have a new business manager who I am grateful for. She is a real gentleman. Superintendent, and I've mentioned this in the past, I really think, you mentioned why he came to our community, he really cares. Our Director of People's Services, I have, I've been so appreciative of her time and attention. And then our principal, I really can't tell you folks how much I've been impressed by these. I know that people in our community, in our area, want to come to this school to work and these are great examples of that. And I really take the time to say that because during discussions with these people, I've seen the passion in their eyes and the pain in their eyes because we're discussing real, you know, cuts to the children and the programs. So I want everyone to be aware of that. So now that's combined with fourteen percent growth in the healthcare costs and some challenges, I think, and some learnings that we as a school committee probably are taking away from how the budget was managed in the past around the budget we were able to bring forward from school choice. I'm very thankful for the amount of community engagement. It was like a floodgate last night. It had been kind of a steady, you know, growth of communications in one form or another and the emails and everything last night was just, and they weren't short. But they all had value and I appreciate everyone's engagement, you know, seventy people last Thursday, ninety-plus people tonight. So I'm thankful for that. When I, I think my fellow members of the committee, they're probably used to me, when I look at things financially, I look at them from a personal perspective. And in my profession, I look a lot at data because we can talk about a lot of passion. Everybody has a reason why you need to spend money and there's finite resources, but in the end, it's data. And I think one of the things I do well is data modeling. And so when I've been looking at this, I've been looking for some of those kind of data modeling taking place. So some of my questions will be along those lines. And the other thing is risk, right? So financial risk, how do you mitigate financial risk? And so that's something that I'll be covering as well. From the feedback that I've been receiving, the one thing that I really wanted to share with the administration is that universally, everyone reinforced that there are standards and expectations that communities have and we would see ranges and everyone wanted me to reinforce that. We are, our expectations as a community ought to exceed those, right? And what I've heard consistently is a commitment to do that in a partnership. So that's something, and you heard it from a number of the people tonight, people on here complaining, they're asking, this is something I'm seeing, what opportunities do we have? So we're really blessed that way. So my first area that I'm, I wanted to ask about was the school psychologist. Point six of the school psychologist is automatically going to go to the special education students. I know we have point two that's going to cover the other areas. Reviewing school policy, looking at diversity of activities that they have, I'm not sure that that's enough. And so I'll just share some thoughts that I have on areas that I'm aware of and that, so it doesn't make sense to me that we're able to reduce that. So what's the actual cost savings of the point two and do we have any kind of all-in expense there about, you know, what's going to be the reduction in maybe retention bonus and kind of partial unemployment? So what's the real number that we would save? What is the school psychologist doing now that they won't be doing when they're moved to point eight if that were, if we'd move forward with that approach? Another thing is going back to the expectations of the community. The American Association of School Psychiatrists recommend one psychiatrist, school psychi, excuse me, psychologist for every five hundred to seven hundred and fifty students. And again, I think our community has expectations that we would at least meet, we wouldn't go below the minimum threshold. So, you know, I think the five hundred, maybe a little below that, that's good. We have good opportunity there to service our community. So we're not really being overly generous with having a psychologist on staff. And I know I'm just going to throw in the steel dog, I'm just going to run through it real quick and then you can, I'll let you get back to it. Under wellness policy, the school committee wellness policy, ADF, we refer to counseling and psychology, psychological services. The district will maintain programs and services by qualified school psychologists who supports the values and social and emotional well-being of students, families and staff. So again, going back to having point six taken care of under the special education, then point four seems a challenge there. We talk about under community, the district will seek opportunities to educate community on the health and wellness of school-aged children and encourage community partnership that assists the district in this effort. Again, I would see that that would be the school psychologist. And then health education, the district will maintain a plan, sequential PK, pre-K through six health curriculum that addresses the physical, social, emotional and cognitive development of all students and is aligned with Massachusetts education curriculum frameworks. And I don't doubt that you agree completely with these, but I'm just, again, trying to understand how we achieve all those if we're making the reductions. And then when I think about the roles and responsibilities, I don't know the role that the school psychologist has in crisis management. Perhaps the director's pupil services might have the lead on that, but it seems it would be an important role for them. I don't want to talk about individuals, but we've had, this year, had issues that affected a significant number of students in the community. And we've also seen over the past few years, and Mr. Neary's referred to the opiate challenges that we've had and we've seen direct impacts to families in our community. So again, that's not a, what happens on those days when she's not in school? We have, one of the parents talked about anxiety. They're not in a five or four and they're not in an IEP. So what happens to those services? There's not, there's not a way to qualify that, but that child has a real need. And then talking specifically, and I like to remove myself as the motivator for something, but I think sometimes it's good to sprinkle it in as another example, being a parent as well. My daughter, I learned through being a parent, from my sister, who's a school teacher, an elementary school teacher in New Mexico, that empathy is something that's not inherent to us. And I didn't know that, right? So to me, I thought like, you know, we're all empathetic. Well, I learned that that's something that we develop and my daughter had some challenges that way. So Wendy had put together a group of students that had needs there, maybe some of them were on IEPs, but my daughter was included there. And that was really nice because in addition to external resources that we were applying, that was able to now look at a school and maybe she had some peers she can talk to in that matter. So that was an example. And then we look at the class size and the high needs and I just see that there's going to be too much. I look at that list and I don't see point two. I just don't see point two there. And again, finite resources, but looking at the needs and how we want to keep a healthy school, I just don't see how that cut's going to be realistic or would it's not going to be a drop-off in what we're providing to the children, right? What are we needs to deliver the environment for the children to grow and to be educated in? So that, that's my first thing, so I'll shut up for a minute and let you respond.
Sure. As you saw on my list, you know, if we were to obtain additional funding, that was one of those areas we would look at. And the challenge is, you said with crisis, there's a team, you know, and the school psychologist and the principal and the assistant principal are all part of that team to deal with different situations as necessary. And looking at the information that I have, looking at the number of students that need to have special needs and just because you have special needs doesn't mean that you need psychological services. You know, there are groups and there are individual sessions. And so the challenge, again, is based upon the numbers that we have. You cited, you know, the standard of five hundred to seven hundred to one and as you acknowledge, we have fewer than that. And we have lower than average students with special needs in comparison to other schools in the area, to be honest with you. I think it's quality, due to the quality of the staff that we have and the educational program that we have. So, you know, again, it comes back to that, those unknowns. You know, you have kids that have crises and part of the challenge is, you know, these crises sometimes are created or, you know, begin at home and they, they don't just check them at the door, they bring them into the, into the environment as well. So I hear you, I absolutely hear you. But they're also, those are the ones that we have to recognize that we can't, in supporting our kids, and I've seen this and I struggled with it, I struggled with it as an administrator, as a building administrator and assistant principal. When a student is having crisis, how long should you help them process what that issue is? You know, schools are educational institutions. We want to be able to help our kids, you know, pull themselves back together, deal with whatever skills they can so that they can then get back into the educational process. And so the challenge is trying to look at situations and say, all right, is having one person spend three hours with a student really the best interest of that student's and that staff member's time? And so those things weigh into it when I look at some of the data that's being used. As you know, it was point six. I don't like to differentiate between what is for special education and what is for the general population. I'm just speaking for myself simply because of the fact that every kid has at one time or another a special need, in my opinion. And many adults as well. So for me, you know, I see it as a contiguous point eight that's going to ebb and flow as necessary. What that schedule will actually look like is part of the question I'll have to have with, ask the principal. I mean, easily, it could be, you know, four days a week, but it may not be. It could be just five shortened days to try and recognize what's there. One of the things that I'm exploring is, you know, I believe, and this gets back to what has been said, I believe, by Mr. Neary as well, was, you know, we have kids in the community and families in community in crisis. Is there a way that we can potentially bolster this position and get it to where it needs to be so that that person can go do home visits and get people, you know, get some help at the home, which is where all great learning begins anyways? So I'm optimistic about this particular position because I see it as, as important because it does impact potentially the entire school. And to me, that's why, for me on that list, when we were looking at, if we get additional funding, class size was there and special education services. funding, class size was there and special service, education services, and this was right there on it. I added the point two back after meeting with the individual, they made it, they made a compelling case. I looked again at the data with, with both the principal and the PPS director and, and we, we said, yeah, this is something that's important, that we need to do our best to maintain. And if we get more funding, we will go there. Particularly if we can get, you know, hope it be part of that community engagement piece as well, so.
I know it's more of an art than a science, and I know, I believe you when you say if you get the funding back that you would apply it there, but I look at this list and I don't know. I guess I'd, I'd like to understand, what do you see the, what responsibilities being taken away? And, and I don't want to make it specific to the individual, but knowing the commitment and seeing, having seen that that individual's workload reduced, well, the compensated workload reduced in the past, my concern is that, that person's going to do the right thing for the kids in our community, but then is that the right thing for us as employers, whether we're not aware of it or not, to allow that? And so, I, I just, I don't see those services, I don't, I don't know how to say it. I see that because we are the community we are and people care and are dedicated, that they will make that happen. So, I don't know what's going to be taken away, that that person, you know, is going to be, is going to be able to offload it. And who are they going to offload it to? And is that appropriate for that person to be offloaded to? Is that somebody who has some limited training rather than a degree in experience? And again, Doug, I know this is not an easy one. This is the one thing on the budget I really, really don't get. I don't, I, I struggle with this one more than anything and that's why I'm, I, so anyway. So, you know, who's going to do, who's going to pick up the workload? What's going to be transferred? I don't know.
I think in some cases, some supports that would be individual may need to be grouped together. That's what I've seen in consultation with others that, that are work at an elementary school that do something similar. You know, part of the requirements that they do is, you know, they do testing as well and trying to make sure that, you know, they get the opportunity and time both to do the testing and to write the report is part of the challenge as well. So, you know, for me, I look at the numbers, the numbers of kids that needed special education services that were both on IEPs and 504 plans, that needed counseling services, and the numbers were, you know, not significant enough, in my opinion, to warrant a full 1.0. So, so for me, you know, I don't want to cite specifically what they're not going to be doing because I think that they can do what they're currently doing at a point eight capacity.
Okay. Okay. So, my, my next question was around speaking, again, with members in the community, whether through email or personally, looking ahead. So, as you're probably aware, there's a number of medical doctors in the community as well as on the committee who have suggested to me this 14%. So, in the past, just within the past four years, John, was it, Dan? Was it like we had a 0% within the past four years, right, on the healthcare increase?
There was a year, I can't remember which year.
It was like four or five years ago?
Years ago.
Three years, okay.
Yeah.
So, that seems to be an outlier, and so what about the 14%? I mean, is this, is this going to be something unusual? And if we start to see inflation go up as well as healthcare goes up, 2.5%, I mean, we're looking at a real challenge for how do we keep the, the essence of what our school is, the experience of what our school is, and then also manage that 2.5%? I mean, this is, it's, and, and again, like, you know, like you mentioned before, it's the same group that all the municipal employees are part of. So, it's not only the, the staff here, right? It's also the staff at Mount Greylock and the police and the municipal employees that are in, so they're going to see the same increase as a group. So, I'm concerned about that. The, the doctors I've spoken with said that that's probably not going to be completely unusual. So, I guess, I just, in terms of long-range planning, I wanted to bring that up as well.
No, it's, it's a very good point. Berkshire Health Group, which is, consists of, I think, 13 school districts or towns, of which Lanesboro, Mount Greylock, and Williamstown are three of them. You know, they're, they're trying to help coordinate the health, the health insurance policies so that, you know, we can weather the storm. Several years ago, as you know, there was those 0% for whatever reason, and, and then, since then, there haven't been. 14% is a lot. It really is a lot. And so, but for me, you know, that's, that amount, that rate gets set typically in January as it did this year, got set at the end of January, there was a, a vote, you know, we had inklings of what it might be in December, and they said maybe, you know, double digits, we was hoping 10 or 11, and it turned out to be 14. I'm worried about that, looking ahead. Options that I, that we are going to be exploring because there are different plans that, that the town offers and the schools offer, and are there ways that we can have people, I'll just use myself as an example because I have a particular plan that I think I, I am comfortable with, but I don't know if it's one I would, I might go to a less expensive one because of the health insurance costs, and in doing so, I'll pay less, and in doing so, so will the, the town. And so, but the concern is I might get less service and that's my worry. So, we're looking to see if we can get somebody from Blue Cross in to help us explain that. I didn't know Nancy, if you wanted to expand on that?
Well, I was just going to say the 0% that you alluded to from a few years ago, they, the BHG actually drew down their reserves to help prevent any increases similar to what the school was doing here.
Okay.
So, this year, they couldn't do it anymore and so there was a spike in the cost, but that doesn't mean it won't continue to spike. So, what Doug is saying is now what they're doing is looking at different configurations. So, if the cost overall is continuing to go up, is there a way to shift it?
Okay.
So, it's, it's a very serious, obviously, contributing factor to the budget across the board for all of Williamstown's budget.
Right.
Because they've got the three schools, it's Williamstown Elementary, the high school, and as Doug said, McCann.
Okay. And then the other thing, and again, I understand that this is what you're, you as an executive team are thinking about and looking, you discussed the long-term. Trends within Berkshire County is reduction of population and children in school, but we've actually seen the opposite here in Williamstown.
Yep.
And to that point, we've seen, Williams has talked about bringing in, increasing their, their staff over the next 10 years by 10 each year. And so, I think what I've heard from the members of the community who are professors at Williams is that they tend to be people who are maybe younger career, earlier career, and more likely to be having children and bringing them into the school system. And so, that's something we need to be aware of. We're looking at, Cable Mills has 12 affordable housing units that's coming online. We have the new senior housing over here of current residents, right? So, they're going to be leaving relatively affordable housing, so there could be families that come in. So, my concern is that we're going to, over the next couple of years, I think that's something we really need to model as well, really kind of understand where the growth is going to take place or at least be aware that there could be growth projections coming in.
That's a very good point.
Next item I heard, several people asked, and it was on my list. We want to have a reserve so that we can cover unexpected expenses, but if this is such an exceptional year, why do we want to start building up that reserve this year? Why wouldn't we look at spending that down? Most school systems obviously have, try and build up any kind of surplus they can, but like you mentioned, we're very fortunate, we have the endowment that we received from Williams College. Wow. That prevented us some significant financial issues this year.
Certainly did.
And so, I think that, that looking at the risk of coming into unexpected expenses is greatly mitigated by having that, right? So, we don't have to worry about anything within the physical structure of the building.
Yeah.
So, really, yes.
It does have restrictions, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah, yeah, I know that, John.
Just for everyone's sake, people know.
Well, I mean, general, generally, I think the, the risk is, is low because that's what I think a lot of organizations, a lot of, that carry a surplus are, are looking at unintended or unexpected expenses within a physical structure. So, I, I think-
Those are the big tickets.
Yeah. So, if we, if we were to use that 57, I mean, I, I don't want to necessarily not have that flexibility, but if we use it, so let me put it this way. If we were to have to add a teacher, that 57 is not going to cover the cost of providing a teacher, whether it's in a kindergarten or it's in a side-by-side. So, if we spend $57,000 down, we're sticking to the delta, right? So, where's that delta going to come from? Is, is it going to be layoffs? Well, it sounds like we might have to go back to the, to the town anyway. So, wouldn't it be better to try and mitigate any kind of impact to the overall program, structure, staffing that we have and then have to go with a single ask rather than a partial ask?
That's, that's a strategy, as I said, as, that I considered, but to go to the town, particularly when you have other avenues where you can build up that reserve. That $57,000 is what we anticipate they will have at the end of this year. We'll be putting another 30% of our choice funds into it for next year. So, it'll actually be probably twice that. And so, for me, it's, you're right. I mean, if it comes down to, if we have to hire a teacher, that would be the go-to and it would be enough to hire a teacher, you know, at the last second. My worry is for things that exceed that. And so, to spend it down, I can absolutely understand the temptation. I know some schools that they just, they spend it all down and it is just considered as part of their revenue and that's part of their process. And if that is something that, you know, in conversation with the town that they want to do, the town just has to be prepared that we can come to them with, you know, a request anywhere from 50 to $250,000 multiple times over the course of the year. One school district has that, we did have a student move in from our district and, you know, we did the right thing as we, every school system will do, is pay for that student's services that even though they, they never set foot in, in any of our schools. And that is the right thing to do and, and thing that we have to be prepared to handle because the offsets for that come following year through circuit breakers, you know. So, so that's, that's my worry is to build it up in a reasonable manner. As, as you know, I said originally, we're going to just, you know, let's go full 250 and then that was nowhere near reasonable given what you've seen. So, so, you know, and Nancy, in my conversation with the town, we said, all right, we'll, we'll use 70% and we'll bang 30%. And if we can do that over a couple of years, we can get to a point where I think we can then feel more comfortable to weather some of these other storms. So, but for me, I, I feel strongly that we need to at least keep what little reserve that we have right now as, and 30% plus whatever we roll over, I think is reasonable. One expense, one teacher, and it's gone, and then I'll go to the town. And then I can go to the town and say, we tried to save and it, our needs this year exceeded our, our abilities.
I wonder if that doesn't play back to what Mark McDermott said about being too cautious, right? So, maybe it's an opportunity for us to avoid the elimination of some of the programming. So, maybe that, that ask should be, hey, listen, you know, we were responsible with our budget and, you know, we, we didn't carry a surplus. I, I guess one of the things that I think about is that we're very fortunate because we have a lot of, if we open up a choice slot, it's going to get filled. So, we're going to get that soon.
Yep.
And a lot of schools don't even have that buffer, right, necessarily, because they don't have choice slots, so they're going to get filled. So, I guess, that's, that's my perspective. I, I'd like to see us spend it down. So, side-by-side, I guess I should start off by saying I have a daughter who's, who's four, she's going to go into preschool next year at Williamstown Community Preschool. She will not be going to side-by-side, so no conflict of interest. You mentioned some of the risk reduction approaches as being avoiding mid-year layoffs or having to go back to the town as why we're, that's the way you, we're mitigating risk on some of these things. When I look at side-by-side, I'm thinking about it from a special education perspective. And again, going back to modeling, looking at the historical numbers, we have five students right now. We know that from the numbers that the, the side-by-side team had provided off to the, the school committee, we know that traditionally 10% of the students that are, the pre-K screening, does the, students that are gone, have gone through the pre-K, pre-K screening will be identified for some level of services. Now, we know we have an early intervention that has identified some students. And if we look at that model, I just, I don't see that, I see that we're going to, we're going to cause, I'm concerned we're going to cause a mid-year disrupt, disruption, right? It could be the, just before the school year, it could be early in the school year. Well, we're now, we're going to have to have, we're shifting teachers, we're going to be shifting students. I think, I think it's, there's an opportunity here to look at what's needed to service the children within a special education environment. And when I say special education, let me also say that my son did attend side-by-side as a special education student, right? So, he was placed mid-year in the system when we moved to town. I was a, a member of the PAC for, for three years with Steve, I was the vice president. So, I, I'm really trying to look at what's going to be the right environment for the children, right? I think some of my concerns, I mean, I know the PAC is not concerned about that, but again, I'm looking at the risk, right? We have some of the continuity of services for children, we've talked about them. For some students, it's appropriate to, to attend a half-day and then another half-day. Some children for, for full-day attendance would do better off with getting, having the same peers in the class and then going through the whole day within a full-day program. I just, I'm afraid that, looking at the numbers, we're going to wind up adding, you know, I mean, you said in your presentation, a half-day, which is, if that's what it is, I understand. But it seems like we're going to need more slots and I guess, I'd like to, I, I would think that it would be better to manage that proactively. Again, I know the director of pupil services and you have spent a lot of time on this. I just, I'm concerned that meeting the minimum threshold we know we're going to have is not doing a service to what the trends traditionally have looked at. So, I don't, I don't think that's supportable moving into the beginning of school year, We talk about what the good number is for the minimum threshold and I am, and I didn't get a chance to speak with Kim about this, I'm sorry, Kim, I just found this. I found some information, let me see, where is it? Let me just. I found some information and I can't recall, but it was on one of the state websites with, Early education, yeah.
Early intervention grant from 2013.
No, no, it was early, what is it, early intervention?
Early education in care?
Yes, I think, I think that's it.
EEC.
But it talked about, there was an FAQ that talked about what is the right, what's the minimum threshold for blending of specialized education kids with typical students that would qualify as meeting the expectation for a, a side-by-side program?
A co-top program.
Sorry?
For that RFP you're talking about, it was a universal, it was a universal pre-K grant. That program came out in 2008. It was revamped in 2011 and then re-offered in 2013. Their requirements for that were a minimum of 15%, maximum of 50. We did not qual, we did not, this district did not apply for that grant in 2008. I was not here, it was under previous administration. We were then not eligible in 2011 or in 2013. So, the requirements of that model, being a co-top model, are a little bit different, so.
One of, one of the things that I, I just want to jump over real quick. I built a matrix and so, if we have, if we have 15 or 14 students, it would require at least three. If we go down to 13 or down to seven, it would require just two. Having had a child with special education, I would think that those numbers are too low, but, I mean, if we look at adding classes, I think we could still have what we, at 15% being a bare minimum threshold, I think we would still be able to have a class and confidently say, I don't want to, you know, I'm, Mr. Neary might have something to say about this, but that would say it could be inclusive. And so, I think if we built that model up and that would allow us to build a model that, again, I don't want to waste your time, but I built a model that said, okay, maybe these are the levels that we would see and historically have seen. We would hold two spaces in each of the, the three classes and then, you know, that way it would leave at least those eight that we've seen for typical or tuition-paying students. But it's still, it seemed to me it was still meeting the need, the intent and spirit of that. So, I, I'll let that one go, but I guess that's something I was just concerned about because I think there's, it's going to be disruptive.
Richard, can I interrupt for just a second?
Of course.
Can I ask you how much more you have?
Home stretch. I'm on the home stretch.
Can I ask everyone what your availability is to stay? It's already late, so- It's already late, so I want to manage whatever, I want to get a sense of what time we have left so that I can manage it appropriately.
Sure.
I have nothing planned.
I have to.
My kids are sleeping.
Okay, some of you. Then go ahead, Joan, let me know and...
I'll go, I'll go quick, okay? Feedback I heard a lot of from parents, and I get this, right, is we seem to be cutting more of the service providers, people who are actually are, that have touchpoints with the children as opposed to administration, actually we've been adding administration. And again, I know how hard you and your team work, so I know what the value is that you guys bring. But it's also, I think, a fair criticism to say, or fair observation to say, you know, we're looking at adding director facilities in the future, right? We've added a assistant principal. That's something the community is very aware of and I just wanted to raise that for you, you know, as you're kind of looking ahead. At the same time, we don't want to overload our people, we don't want to overburden them. And that's one of the reasons we added the assistant principal. So I get that, I just wanted to make you aware of that. Let me see, how can I say this? Because I heard something before that we haven't announced a retirement. There is a retirement that we are aware of. Is there an opportunity with that retirement to reduce that position due to the nature of the position to a point eight for additional cost savings? Because if we did that with a new, with a new hire, right, rather than, because we know the retirement's going to be in place, is that something we could meet at a point eight because of the nature of that job? And there wouldn't be any impact, so we would have the cost savings down from the current, but we'd also wouldn't have to worry about any unemployment insurance.
Excellent idea, excellent thought. The challenge, as you've heard, as somebody said from the audience before, is we want to try and retain the good people that we have as well. So if there is a retirement, it becomes an automatic opportunity to move somebody who might be cut into that particular position.
It's a specialist.
Okay. So since it's not publicly known, then we are not...
Is that fair?
It doesn't matter at this point. So, but that is something that we will examine and continue to examine. But at this point, it was on the chopping block. We have taken it since off the chopping block.
Okay. So I guess, I'll, just in the interest of brevity, the budget process. So we've talked about that and I think that there's some confusion. I don't understand it as well beyond the point when we meet with the finance committee, right? So what happens if, if we go forward? So we have the obligation to, as members of the school community, to present the right budget for the educational needs of children in our community. So if we go and we go to the town and say, we need X, and X is something they're not comfortable with, what's the process? You know, what's the negotiations? How do we ever get to that two-and-a-half percent override? Because I've heard people multiple times saying, two-and-a-half percent override, two-and-a-half percent override. I did a quick look online and it looks like it's really more focused around infrastructure. So I don't know, I guess I don't understand that whole, I don't understand that process, I don't understand what the triggers are, I don't understand how we get to that trigger. So I guess, if not tonight, because it is getting late, it would be good to understand that in the future.
Yeah. I would like to know that as well. I'm not familiar with it.
Done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me pause for a minute. Kathy, Joe, do either of you have questions for Kim?
I do, actually.
Okay. Joe?
No, for Kim.
Okay. Then Kathy, I'm going to ask you to go and I'm going to ask you to ask your questions of Kim first.
Sure.
Because Kim has a particularly long drive home.
Not directly at Kim, but she might be helpful in answering the question.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Superintendent, who slipped me the note.
My concern that I heard multiple times today from audience members was if you have a child who needs a full-day IEP and you're going to set them up with two half, into two half-days, I'm assuming you're not just going to plug them into the half-day programs as they are now. Is there some type of modification that's going to happen?
So the structure of side-by-side for next year, the inclusive preschool program will be restructured. I mean, so I know that, you know, we have to provide lunch, we have to provide rest times and so the, you know, we have a model in place in Lanesboro that meets the state guidelines. And so, you know, we jumped ahead a lot to, you know, talk about two half-days but never really talking about what a whole day would look like. And it's, so each child's, we'll be reconvening teams to talk about this and, you know, talking about individual students and what their plans have to say. I'm not comfortable with doing in an open forum, but...
Yeah, yeah. No, I just, in a general sense...
Yeah, no, the model of half-day, half-day is how it's being talked about isn't really how it will be, you know, implemented. So, I mean, it will be a restructure.
I mean, other, I guess, other than, the peers would change, obviously, to some degree, unless multiple students are going both half-days. It seems like you could make adjustments to the program.
Correct.
To meet those needs. Okay. All right. That was my only question for you.
Okay, thanks. I'm not going to boogie, I am actually going to stay.
Excellent, okay.
Thank you, though.
Kathy, go ahead.
Yeah, and then my only other question was with the fourth to fifth grade transition. And Joel, I have two kids in that grade. So, I mean, a class size of twenty-four isn't ideal, but I guess there must be a lot of discussion between you and the current teachers to assess whether or not they think that would be, you'd be able to meet the educational needs of the kids in that grade.
We've been watching those, we've not been having conversation, we've been watching this class since kindergarten. And when, historically, when four sections have been proposed, by the time they get to third grade, they're condensed to three. So this has been a unique group. And truly, every year, we come and we talk about this group and, not just for number's sake, but for needs' sake. And so it's been a group that we've been watching for a long time. I think that twenty-four is doable. I'm incredibly confident in our teachers and our special ed teachers as well that we can make it work. In a perfect world, would we like it to be a smaller class? Yeah. But I'm confident we can make this work, even though it doesn't feel beautiful.
I guess I'm more upset about losing a teacher than I am about the class size. I mean, the class, twenty, who wouldn't rather have twenty-one than twenty-four? But I guess losing a teacher, especially with somebody we just hired.
Yes. Someone spoke earlier, I don't remember who it was, about, about the fact that we've done an amazing job getting some incredible new teachers on our staff. And, and it's with absolute, very heavy heart that these kinds of decisions are being made. And I've had to look at people in the eye who not only I like, but I completely respect as educators and say, I have to riff you. It's awful. And I don't think it's what anybody would want in any capacity. And so we're doing everything we can to think about, okay, how can we, you know, how can we retain, not just retain people who we care about, but retain these really amazing, amazing educators.
And then I guess one last thing. If we didn't vote and went back to the town to ask for more money, that, I don't know a lot about finances, but that would mean more taxes, right? Is that a higher, like, if you ask for more money, is that, what does that mean, like?
No, it's what they decide to appropriate.
From their...
That, my understanding is, you know, the town will say that they can or they cannot and if they can, they will figure out amongst themselves where it comes from.
So they would adjust it down from, they would take money from something else?
They would take it from something else typically, or, you know, if there's enough room in the tax rate to increase taxes, that's an option that sometimes towns can do. I don't know what the levy limit is for the town at this point.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All good?
I'm, I'm excited.
Okay. Joan?
Yeah, I'll be quick. I know that the not saving the choice money is, you've eaten your seed corn there and I just don't think there's that much seed corn really to be eaten anyway. I don't know if that's much of a, a place we should put too much energy. I mean, if we save that, if we don't save that, thirty percent of it is just, it's not very much. But the whole thing is just this, you touch one end of it and the other end of it slides. You can't, I think, a lot of people, I get, you know, a message from different people about their, the thing that they're particularly sad to see go or upset about seeing going. And they're all, I mean, you'd love to keep them all, but it's really tough. And I think even if we ask for more money, certainly the committee doesn't get to say, what goes where, that's not our job, correct? I mean, that's still, if more money comes in, then the priorities will be set. The money will go where it's most needed. And I, I feel like a very big priority is small class size. A very, a very big priority is not losing people that we've just hired who are very good. If we can do that while kids' needs are still being met, who have IEPs, maybe not in the same way that we would like, but there's four-hundred-and-thirty-five kids in the school. It's a lot, it's a lot of kids. And I think we really have to think hard about the biggest bang for the extra bucks that we get, which sounds cold and terrible, but, I mean, it's a cold and terrible world. It's every time you touch part of this, something else moves. And I wonder, have we contact, we ever had a grant writer sort of on staff? Have we ever had somebody whose job it is to just round out money? But you do a couple other things, too.
Well, let me explain just a little bit, because her title right now is PPS Director. And what I discovered when I came on board was that she is actually the grant writer and quite a successful grant writer, I might say. I mean, some of these grants I've seen come in, they're arduous and sometimes the payoff is rather minimal compared to the work that you have to put in to just request them and then to validate them at the end. So it's not just you ask for money. So, no, it, I mean, Grady has been our grant writer for many years at this particular point and that was, that is, and that is beyond her current job description.
Right. I mean, I wonder, is this, is this something we look into? I don't know how grant writers work, it's not really the world I move in, but is it...
It's really hard because it's, I was fortunate to take a class as part of my graduate work and so it's, it comes easy to me. So, you know, I worked, I did a lot of work when I was in Pittsfield, working with the Department of Ed, so I was able to learn what they were looking for when you were submitting your grants and know what we're called, what we're eligible for, what we're not, you know, how to navigate the system. You know, it's something, sometimes for me, it's that quiet time that I can focus and do it, so I'm not saying, oh, take that off my plate by any stretch of the imagination. You know, I actively look at the portal to see what's available and, you know, we apply for what we need and, you know, the state's great with the context that we've made in letting me know when something comes out that we may now have met the threshold for. And so what I will say on the side of writing grants, though, is if we become a region, we become eligible for far more money than we are now because as singleton schools, we either don't have the income capacity or the enrollment. And so, like, there is the Twenty-First Century Grant and, you know, that opens up once in a blue moon. Well, it's open right now and Lanesboro's the only school that qualifies of it. I can partner it with our other two schools and look at a quarter of a million dollars to share with after-school programming and that's, you know, that's what I'm working on. And so, but, yeah, if we were, if we were bigger, if we're, our whole number was twelve-hundred, it gives us more capacity for, for grants, so.
Okay. I mean, I know, I know you work hard at that all the time and just, is this something that if we were to find some way to dedicate, you know, I don't know, do they work on a percentage, are writers today?
Grant writers, I, you know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, because in Pittsfield, there was several of us that did them, it was kind of broken up in the areas of our expertise and so I don't, I don't know.
I know of large districts that do, that have a dedicated grant writer and sometimes people from the community volunteer to help write grants, to bring them in. The challenge is, as you heard me say earlier, is, you know, I don't want to use it just for anything, it has to be for a specific purpose, you know? So there's, yeah, so...
Yeah. And you can't, you can't lean on that too heavily, you can't count on that from year to year. It's not something, and, you know, like, I would love to see more science in the school, I'd love to see the science, hands-on science stuff expanded, that costs money. You know, my, my own list of priorities is different probably than a lot of people's, but I think, I would be in favor of asking the town for more money, but I think everyone should be prepared for the fact that we don't get to decide where that goes. That's, you know, Dr. Dias is, that's why we hired him. And he does, and please, everyone, keep in mind that he's looking for efficiencies. I mean, we've had long conversations. Definitely his motivations are good in this. This is a great school, he knows what a great school this is. And it's hard, we're in a tough spot. The only other comment I would say is that, yeah, I have been really pleased with the tone and the tenor of all the communication I've had from the community. I think it's great. And I, you know, I walked into this meeting late, without trepidation. I know you're my neighbors and you're my friends and we're all gonna, we're all on the same team. These are tough decisions and, you know, I actually feel good about being on the board even in tough days like these.
I'd like to get the sense of the committee as to what our next step should be.
I have a procedural question?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So if the budget is voted tonight and it is approved, and this is an honest question, does that preclude us from pursuing from the town additional funds?
I don't know the answer to that question.
So last year, Lanesboro, you were there, they held the school budget on the floor and asked for money to go back into the school budget and money was granted into the school budget at the town meeting on the floor. So I do know that in Lanesboro, and I'd, assuming that it is town process, because I live in a city, so I don't know the town processes as well, but they held the school budget on the floor and a member from the community asked for a specific amount of money to be reallocated into the school budget and it was put back into, so they redid the numbers that night there and then voted the school number that evening.
I don't want to interrupt, but if there isn't a current finance committee member in the room, my knowledge is a little bit dated, but I volunteered that as a member for almost twenty years, I would be happy to try to share my recollection of the process.
Please come to the mic. Thank you.
There have been a lot of comments about conflicts of interest, so I am Fern's wife, Fern's husband. In fact, when Fern started working for the school, I tried to convince the rest of the finance committee that I had a conflict of interest and they should let me off and they wouldn't. Took a while to get off. So basically, you're in an odd position, as Kim observed. At town meeting, anything can happen in a certain sense, right? The town meeting, the budget you present at town meeting is what's referred to as an omnibus budget. That precludes members of the town arbitrarily amending line items, but doesn't preclude anyone standing up and saying, I move that we add a certain amount of money to the town budget at town meeting. On the other hand, in the procedures of the finance committee and my experience, when you go to present to them, they basically are going to vote a recommendation on your budget, which will appear in the, in the program that's presented at a town meeting. Having that recommendation is kind of like gold, right? Walking into town meeting and saying at the last minute, I propose a change in the elementary school budget sparks confusion, distrust, concern that the budget wasn't thoroughly vetted. It would just be a terrible strategy. Your best strategy, if you want to reconsider this, is to walk into your meeting with the finance committee with a clear vision of what you want to request, even to come back to them a day or two later and say, no, no, we were wrong, would obviously look rather odd. So your best strategy is probably to, if you can't vote on it tonight, schedule another meeting before your meeting with the finance committee and make a proposal. At that point, when you meet with the finance committee, as I think Doug suggested, they are, their responsibility is to hash out the issues of what are the overall priorities of the town and how can they best be met. They may very well come back to you and say, we can't do this this year, right? The proposition two-and-a-half prevents a sudden tax increase. On the other hand, it's been a while, I really have not been on the committee for a long time.
Understood.
But under Peter Foulon... But, under, under Peter Foulon, the town did have unused tax levy capacity, and there is the possibility that, that they could exercise some of that in, in your favor. You'd have to make the case. One of the components, now, now you can shut me up the minute you want, because I'm going off track, and I'm trying to say some of the things that I've been unable to say before. One of the things that might be very interesting to look at is the history, not just of your budget appropriations over the last years from the town, but of the other budget appropriations. Even though the increase in the tax rate is limited to two and a half percent, each town, there is addition, each year, there is additional growth in the taxable property. So if you have been requesting and getting two and a half percent every year, you've been getting less than your share, okay? Other departments of the town have been getting greater increases. I have not been following this, I don't know if what I'm saying is true.
But what you're saying is, what you're saying is, check to see not just what the elementary school's history has been, but also what other town departments have gotten, and, and see what it is, okay?
Mr. Chek, can I ask you a question?
Quickly.
Oh, well, it'll be quickly.
That's how I was when I first got up here, that's why I said, I'm Fern's husband.
I'm gonna pass, I'm gonna pass my question.
Say again?
Doug, does that?
I, I'm done, I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that answers your question.
That answers my question, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would be in favor of asking the town, in whatever format is appropriate, allowed.
Asking for what?
An increase in the, what, I don't know, I don't even know how to word it.
Okay.
In the, they, they told us, okay, you get a three point nine percent, was that what it was?
Three point seven.
Three point seven percent, I would say, in a consultation with, I don't know, us, I guess, when we asked for more than that.
I think that, let me get what everybody else thinks about that general concept, and then if we, you know, depending on what we think, we can expand on that. Richard?
I, I guess I'm, it was very helpful with Thompson, and I agree with Joe. If we think we want to ask for more, I think it would just be good to challenge, we'll give Doug and the administration time to go back and look at that and see.
And that's, that's, I, I want to sense, and then I want to hash out kind of what the next step actually looks like. John?
Yeah, no, I, I concur with the information we just got too, I mean, I would feel, if, if we do decide to do this, to go to FinCom with what we want, rather than have it on the floor, and, because we've all seen those things before too.
Yep.
So, yes.
Kathy?
I agree, so, I think what we are deciding is not to vote on the budget as presented to us tonight, but I don't want to leave this meeting without a clear direction of how we direct the administration, and, and how we delegate labor, because there's an element of this that we should be a process, that we should be part of, there's an element of this that the administration should be part of. My feeling is that we need to, you know, we should hash out some, not all the specifics, but at least some general guidelines of what we're asking the administration to do in an amended budget. And I don't know whether that, whether we can give very general advice now, whether we need to have another meeting just even before we can start that process. My hope is that we could give general advice now to start their process, and then meet with the, with the expectation that we might refine it later, but that they would still get the head start. John?
And then I would just implore us to here also work backwards from the timeline question I was asking, so we realize exactly the tight timeframe and we're working in, and when we might meet next, and when, working backwards from town meeting, and the Fin, pick a date for FinCom.
My hope would be that we might reschedule with FinCom. If someone is meeting with FinCom on March twenty-third, then we might be able to.
That's a good idea.
Right, no, we were, Wes was the sixteenth, and I believe the high school is the twenty-third, so we could talk to them about maybe doing Wes.
After Greylock on the twenty-third.
Or doing it, they, they've told me they don't like to do both schools on the same night.
Okay. They don't like to do both at the same night, which I can understand from their perspective.
But we could, we.
We're here at ten thirty.
We could, I'll talk to them and see, you know, what the possibilities are.
Okay, so, I think that.
That's two weeks from tonight.
It is.
Exactly.
Right, we cannot meet this week because of public notice requirements. We can meet next week, we could meet, if we can get the extension to the twenty-third for FinCom, we could meet Monday or Tuesday the following week. Again, though, I'd, I'd like to be able to direct the administration in terms of how much, how much more do we want to ask for in, in general terms, and.
And just, just one comment, and thinking through the timelines.
Yep.
We've got Lanesboro Elementary School, a similar meeting on the twenty-second of March, so.
Do we need to, we need to coordinate our meetings with the other meetings in the tri-district?
So just the next two weeks are almost virtually booked. So I'll talk to the finance committee tomorrow, and connect with you on what the possibilities are.
Okay.
Do we want to, do we need to reschedule, you know, you kind of alluded to providing general guidance, do we need to provide specific guidance, do, do we want to look at when our next meeting is, maybe next week, or?
Well, I think, I think what we're trying to do, I'd like to leave this meeting with administration having at least a general guidance on what we're going to be asking them to do, so they can get started.
Okay.
And then if, you know, if it is, I don't know if it's a dollar amount, I don't know if it's a. If it's a percentage, I don't know if it's a reference to, you know, particular budget line items, I don't know what it, it could be anything, I'm open to brainstorming, but I think the, you know, I don't want to get into issue-specific stuff, I just want to, I, I want to push the ball forward a little bit, and set the stage for a meeting where we push it the rest of the way.
Can I share my?
Yep.
So, we have advised them, the community has spoken with them, so ad nauseam, I think they know generally what we want to do. I think maybe leave it to their discretion, to say, okay, these are some of the things that I've heard from the community, these are things that we want to try and push back in the budget, and then they come up with that percentage, and then they can go talk to the FinCom, and they can get the numbers, like Tom said, you know, if we haven't been getting, if there's been an increase in the value of the property, so if it's, you know, if we ask for two and a half percent, and there's been a delta we've been leaving on the table every year, go back and talk to the FinCom, see where that number is, and then let them fine-tune it, and say, you know, maybe the FinCom can go up to five. I, so I, I would be okay with not providing them guidance, just letting them take what we have, so that's my, that's my thought.
Well, I mean, I guess that the, the flip side of that is, I, I try to put myself in the superintendent's position, and I might have a difficult time essentially reading minds, so. But.
No, I, I mean, everybody ended up to, to.
I, I would like, I would like to offer direction. Go ahead, if you. I mean, I would encourage you, if you had established the priorities that you are recommending for, that you would, if you had money, to see what your minimum may be, I mean, I think, you've already gone to them once, but there's been a serious out twice, the first time, it was four point six five?
Uh, no, it was like six point something, it was up there, so.
No, it was close to five, it was close to five percent.
It was close to five, but it's right, yeah, I don't think I was far off. But a lot has gone on since then, we've had tremendous input since then, I feel like we're a little more empowered, because you're all speaking to us, and you're, when you're speaking to us, you're speaking to the town broadly, I'd like to believe. I hope they're listening, and that what might be in the range of, without being, you know, absurd, but what we think is reasonable, but could help realize something, you know, a significant objective within your priorities there, I think that determining what that is around that, focusing on that would, would be helpful. And then having someone look at the, what are, what is the perspective of the other departments? What have, what have they been granted in the past, I mean, can we look at some historical too, just so we have our, I, some idea of what might be reasonable to ask for in terms of a percentage? Or we would be able to point at that and say, we feel this is a priority this year, especially, given the outpouring from the community.
No, I mean, I have no problems advocating for our kids, and as I said.
And if we can help in that process, we'll all gladly participate in any part of it, and especially in appealing to them. I'd be happy to.
I think, I think for the sake of completeness, and for the sake of giving our committee a chance to consider all the alternatives, that in addition to a scenario involving the priorities that you've set out, that you also present scenarios that incorporate some of the recommendations that we've heard from the public that don't, that are not the view that, that you've presented as the additional things as well. Because, you know, I think we still have to make that decision, and knowing the financial implications of each of those decisions would, would be helpful. We understand the time limitations, you know, and, you know, building a, building a model that is, allows for plug-and-play is unrealistic in the timeframe that we have, but I think the public's been very clear, and I would want to consider not just that proposal, not just that alternate proposal, but also some of the issues that have been raised here.
Okay.
Okay, so what I hear as a plan going forward is to Nancy, administration to get back to me as chair with possible dates that, for us to meet.
Right.
Then, then me working with administration to poll the committee to figure out of those available dates what, when we could have a special meeting. By that special meeting, administration prepare at least preliminary estimates based on what we've talked about. Work with, depending on the timing of that, try to adjust the FinCom meeting if possible. And then plan to, I think that, I mean, the plan's got to be to vote the budget at the special meeting, because that's, we're going to run out of time. Are we in agreement?
Yeah.
And.
Yep. Okay, let's do that, excellent.
Great.
Okay.
Dan, just a, I may have, I didn't doze off, but I think I might have missed something. Are we meeting on March ninth, as, as, is the school committee meeting, is, are we going to take advantage of that date, having been? Oh, this is March ninth, all right, so I meant March, I'm sorry, I meant March.
She was, I'd love to have another day like today's worth of time, yes.
I was thinking next Wednesday, March sixteenth, is when we were originally scheduled to meet with the finance committee. We're now saying that we're not meeting with them on the sixteenth, because we have more work to do. Are we, is, would that be a night for us to be meeting?
They're saying that that's an open night now for you.
Well, I'm saying we all were planning on getting together anyway on the sixteenth, is that a natural opportunity for us to have?
But that only, that only gives us a week.
I'm not sure that the entire, I'm not sure that the entire committee was planning to come to the FinCom meeting.
Okay, okay, okay.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the typical procedure.
Okay, okay.
It, it wouldn't be unwelcome, but, but the typical procedure has been for superintendent to present, the chair attends to, to address.
Maybe we don't want to be typical this year, though.
But, yeah, I mean, if, does Wednesday the sixteenth work, I mean, for people?
Yeah, for me.
Mm-hmm. Not at six.
Wednesday the sixteen, a week from today?
Later.
Yeah.
Seven, the usual seven.
If, whatever time works, I mean, we're at the point now that we need to make it work whenever it can work.
That works for me.
Okay. So if we can get FinCom to move, then that's the obvious time?
Right.
Okay. Any other comments on the budget?
Let's do it again.
All right, moving on, and I am going to ask for the eternal forgiveness of David Rempel, who asked me very nicely to, to move him up, and I just felt like I couldn't, I couldn't interrupt that in this way, David, thank you, I'm going to bump you up now, so that we can talk and vote on the youth center solar project.
Right, I would be very, very pleased if everybody received the packet of information. Basically, we have a donor, who will pay for this over five years, and college has graciously offered us a no-interest loan that we can use for purchasing materials. Couple of quick bullet points, if I can find them. Obviously, everybody's aware of the climate benefit from having solar panels, we've got them on the school, and the educational value that, that it entails. The project, the, the company PV Squared is extremely well-known, it's one of the oldest companies around that does this type of work, they have many, many, many projects that they have completed in this area of the world. The highest portion of the panels will be under eighteen inches above the roof surface, so it's not going to be an eyesore in any way.
It's all on the roof, right?
It's all on the roof, all on the roof.
Okay.
Obviously, safety is a big concern, and the tentative plan right now is to have all the equipment moved up to the roof during April vacation. Once the equipment is on the roof, everything takes place on the roof. In fact, the, the installer was talking about the fact that their biggest concern is safety up on the roof, that nothing falls off the roof, but obviously, we will rope off the entire area to make sure that it is safe. The lease that the youth center has with the school suggests, well, mandates, that if any major project is going to take place, it will be negotiated between the youth center and the school committee. So I bring this to you for your approval, in my opinion, this is a win-win. We have an extremely reputable company that's going to do the work, it's not going to cost the youth center a penny. Obviously, it will save a whole lot of money going forward for the youth center, which will allow us, and before I came here tonight, I was at the finance committee with my budget for next year, and what I explained was the fact that the savings on electricity will allow us continue to expand the scholarship help that we are offering to families. We have, we started a new program last year, where we are in effect taking our, asking teachers for recommendations of children who they feel need out-of-school-time programming, who are not getting it. They give me those names, I then contact the family to explain the program, meet with them, make the offer, et cetera. It's been extremely successful, one of the outcomes of that, though, is we are spending a lot more in scholarship assistance. These solar panels will allow us to continue to do that with our operations, without in any way causing any problem or any major issue with our operational budget. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So you've presented your budget to FinCom, how much of a percentage increase did you ask?
From FinCom, from the town. I spoke to the town manager, and he suggested I ask for a two percent increase. And so I'm, so I'm below you, Doug.
So how, is that right there?
Is there any opportunity with this, and I apologize, I haven't read through all the paper that came with it, I've been doing a lot of reading lately, to benefit the school, and I don't know how much this will generate, or will it not generate enough to go beyond the needs of the youth center?
It's going to meet the needs of the youth center, John. It would not be enough to transfer, in fact, we have a meeting Friday morning.
Just looking for opportunities to save money.
Yeah, I wish, I wish I could do that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
In fact, right now, we are, you know, you don't know what's going to happen with the net metering cap, but right now, without the raising of the net metering cap, we, I am budgeting a seventy-five percent reduction in electrical costs for next year. If the net metering cap goes up, and the system works hopefully as efficiently as we want, we're going to come close to ninety-five percent, but not a hundred and ten percent or anything like that.
Does your donor know how beautifully south-facing and giant the roofs are at Wes?
It's, that's, we spend like five thousand a month on electricity.
I've got a big roof too.
So I will say, I, I did look at the plans in it with, with David, and it makes a lot of sense, you know, he knows next door, I included in the packet the section from the lease, just so you understood our authority and responsibility for, for the building, and I think it makes sense, you know, I think it's, it's great, and what I truly appreciate is the timing, so that.
is the timing, so that, you know, the kids will be on vacation, it won't be a distraction, it won't be a safety concern other than.
Well, we will be in operation that way, but we will have it very well.
That's right. That's a good point.
We will have it very well roped off so that it'll be done, it'll be done appropriately.
And one other quick thing that occurs to me, too, thinking, I think Madeleine's class looks south, and I can't remember. I mean, the, I know those classrooms that do face south get really warm. I just, I'm asking the obvious, maybe it's nothing glare factor that they take that into account.
I think it would be pointing a way.
It's not going to be pointing towards any of those.
But I, I just want to be conscious of that, because I know how hot those classrooms get anyway on the second floor.
I'll ask the question when we meet on Friday.
Okay. Just to ask that question of them.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Williamstown Youth Center's request to authorize this solar project.
So moved.
Second.
Make your donor happy.
Let's go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does that, aye? Do we, does it have to be, is it financial?
It's not money.
Okay.
Not money for us.
Not our money.
Oh, right. That's right. Okay. Sorry.
Beautifully, it's not our money either.
Thanks, David.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Thanks for waiting.
Yeah.
All right. Skipping back up to the principal's report. Joel.
I'll be quick also. But we have a lot of good things that have been going on. First and foremost, we started parent-teacher conferences this week, which is a great opportunity to have all parents come in and hear about the progress of their children. So we're very excited about that. We have a couple of upcoming events. We have a band and orchestra concert on March 22nd at 6:30 in this room, so I hope people will attend. The fourth grade is doing their annual Shakespeare performance, and that is on April 1st at 7:00 PM. Public is welcome.
Macbeth?
It's Macbeth.
Yeah.
On April 1st? That's perfect.
Heavy material for fourth grades. And then we have the PTO camp fair and the third grade pancake breakfast coming on April 9th from 9:00 to 12:00 in the cafeteria and the gym. So that's a really, it's a unique opportunity for parents to kind of be in one room with all the local camps, and so they can come and hear about the camps and sign up, and I, I hope we'll see you there. Short and sweet tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
And thank you for all of your service to you and to your entire staff tonight. Thank you. The school calendar, superintendent's report.
I'll try and be briefer. You have for you a proposed draft. We've made some slight adjustments because there was a couple of hash marks that were incorrect and a snowflake that was out of line. But as you can see, it remains that students, the dates are there. Start in September. And I kept the November 8th Professional Development Day, which is Election Day, as part of our contribution to the, to the county, because other schools will be there as well. And again, I recognize the awkwardness of having the 11th of November also being a day off. But again, you know, it's our attempt to be supportive of and take advantage of professional development for our staff throughout the county. So it has not changed drastically since I last presented you the draft back in February.
So what's the first day, I'm sorry. The first.
September 1st. The first day for students, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, is.
September 1st.
Teacher's second.
31st, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I did not realize what time it is, and the alarms will go off at 11 o'clock. So.
Okay.
Just want to, I don't know.
Well, liven things up.
Yes.
There's no water.
I had no idea what time it was.
Unless, do we have to pay if the police show up?
Yes. So, Joel, can you do me a favor? Can you call the.
See, I know how things work.
The station and just let them know that there's still a meeting going on, so that it does go off, they need not.
I think we can be, I think we can be done.
Okay.
Okay.
I just have one suggestion.
Sure.
And since I was the one who harped on it, and Mary Kennedy's very nervous if I push back again on the 8th, as she told me. But I'd like to suggest maybe the 9th, which is Wednesday, be a full day instead of a half day, if that buys us some instruction time, and then maybe helps the week not be quite so wasted. No, it's a thought. Joel, you need to hear that, actually, but anyway, if she thinks it would work. What if the 9th were a full day instead of a half day, November 9th, to give two, three full days that week as opposed to full day, no day, half day, full day, no day?
I would have to check the contract about that.
Yeah, worry about that.
Yeah, I don't think, I think contractually there would be obligations.
Can we ask nicely?
We will explore that.
I'm just, I mean, just trying to think creatively, but just putting the kids in front. It's been the theme tonight. That's why I'm doing it.
We'll explore it, but I'm the one that knows the call to the alarm, so I'm going to run that.
So do we want to explore that for a week and vote it at the 6th, at our new special meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, Joel.
Is that what we want to do? I'm going to suggest the same strategy with the school choice decision, because I think that it is particularly aligned with the budgetary issues, and so I think that it will be part, it could be part and parcel of what administration wants to respond to our requests for further information. So I would agree, I would think that that would be smart. What I would suggest for executive session is that we skip the executive session tonight and plan to have, it will be a short one, but it's not immediately necessary. I think that we can, we can add it to the special meeting on the 16th without it being a problem.
Yep.
So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, a second. We'll call vote.
Richard, aye.
Joe, aye.
Dan, aye.
John, aye.
Kathy, aye.
Cheers. You guys win the prize.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and thank you.